Yeah, I'll just call the meeting to order. I guess the first quarter is if you want to uh. Collect the new people.
For chair.
For and then.
I'll nominate Ed Hamel for chairman.
I'll second it.
Sorry, Ed.
We'll do a vote on. Ed Hamel for.
Chairman.
I'll make a nomination this season.
Well. Okay, uh. I'll do a. A vote name. Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Wayne Bellmeyer.
Yes.
I don't think you have that. You can't say no. Kim Weiser.
Yes.
Larry Hattner.
Yes.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
Well, you just got in by the skin of your teeth. The good, the good campaign you did.
And we had eight vice. For a second, correct? Nomination for vice chair.
Um, they nominate Jim.
Oh, look at that. Okay.
So, uh, we'll make motion nomination cease. Just about there.
Yes, Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Wayne Bellmeyer.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Kim Weiser.
Yes.
Larry Hattner.
Yes.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
Okay.
Boy, that was tough. Jesus.
Everybody wants to know, it's hard.
We start making eye contact again.
Go call them. Yeah. Greg Myrie.
Here.
Cindy Wright.
Here.
Wayne Bellmeyer.
Here.
Ed Hamel.
Here.
Kim Weiser.
Here.
Larry Hattner.
Here.
Josh Grant.
Here.
Then if we, we have you read the public hearing notes.
So with the public hearing, please take notice that an application has been made by Anthony and Joyce Hefner. Twenty-two, eight-eight-one, county eight, Louisville, Minnesota, five-five-nine-four, to operate an agricultural business in an agricultural wood district, section fourteen to fourteen point three. Conditional use of subdivision one, subsection one and twenty-five, in Spring Grove Township on the following premises to its. Part of the northeast quarter. Of the northeast quarters, section thirty-two, township one oh one, seven, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel. One-three, zero-three-nine-three, zero-zero-two. Said applicant standing admitting application is as the owner of said described land. Hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, at five P M. on Thursday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to Environmental Services Department, three oh four South Marshall Street, Caledonia, Minnesota, five-five-nine-two-one, or email to martin.herrick@co.houston.mn.us. Must be received by Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Comments regarding petition received by this state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the planning commissions prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission, Martin Herrick, is on the same track.
Then I guess we just ask you guys to kind of explain your project.
Yeah, I know. Tell you, I forgot my hearing aids, so.
Can you hear it all?
I can just like say.
I might delay her.
Okay. It'll, it'll work. Um, you wanna just identify yourself and you're gonna start that way.
Identify yourself.
Okay. Anthony Hefner.
Joyce Hefner. And what else did you have coming?
Just to kind of review what, what you're gonna do.
Yep. Yeah, we have a retrofitted a milk house. Us built in twenty-two by eighteen into a butcher shop with uh. Originally, we were gonna go for the retail. Full retail, but I have to do steps in order to get there, so. But it's uh already ready to go for custom exempt, so it'd be uh, I could do custom slaughtering for. If you own the animal, then I can custom slaughter it and process it for you. And then I can do minimal retail if it's my own animals. But mostly just uh, if I have my own, my own cattle and my own pigs is what I'm hoping to do. But you know, what I originally started this for was just to do my own weight of value add. Money to animals I already had. Rather than trying to expand, I'll try to make more money per animal. But then uh. So just through that process, we have to deal with the composting of the, of the animal waste, solid waste, and then the wash water. And uh, being able to land applied, talked with Martin, went through all that, that's all allowable. I guess we're just trying to package it all into one. Permit, so I can turn it to M D A, Minnesota Department of Ag, for the final license, so. Yeah, this is the last step they needed, and then I'll have my custom exempt license.
It sound like it's multi-gas YouTube doing it.
Yes, it's just a family.
Yeah.
For now, it's just, it's small. I mean, if we do fifty feet per year. Even two hundred pigs would be a lot. It's just small. That's.
Where do you have for storage?
What do you have for storage? Like walk-in cooler?
Oh, for, for uh, the animals.
Your meat.
Yeah, see, I have a walk-in cooler, I have a rail on it, so I can slide a carcass in. And then I have uh, another. Cooler that I'm looking to order, and once I get all this stuff done, I have a, a partial grant from Minnesota Department of. Agriculture that's available to me once I get the licensing, and they'll cost share on a couple things, and one will be a walk-in freezer. I'm currently using chest freezers, which is fine to me. I'd rather have my eggs in many baskets than one. You know what it's like to have a freezer go out. But I also have a, a, an enclosed trailer, fourteen-foot trailer that has freezers in it that I can, to be mobile if I want to and that kind of thing, so. Yeah.
You got your big refrigerator.
What's that?
Your big refrigerator.
Yeah, I have a. Three-door reach-in cooler for cooling. I got that out of a school, but so. Yeah, a lot of that is their requirements. You have to be able to maintain X amount of volume, but I have to have, be able to put a whole animal into this cooler if need be. So. That's, yep.
So where do you drain your wastewater?
I have, there's an existing septic there. It's not up to date, but the wastewater, wash water goes to, into the septic. And then uh, we, I think, I don't know what numbers we talked about, so much of it can be used in the compost, composting, and the rest can go on stream surface. Right? So that everything can be held, so it can all be pumped if it needs to be, but there is also, you know, I'll let, to let it go out on the pa, on our pasture, so.
That's part of where you see the condition that we have in there, dressing, whatever, it's very part of. Of the. I don't wanna call it seppage, because it is seppage as they define seppage, but it is wastewater.
Yeah.
Do they have a holding tank? Will they have, will you have a holding tank for your wastewater?
Well, it goes into existing septic, that will be the holding.
Ace.
Well, I think you need something more than that.
If there's an existing tank, oh.
It's a tank, yeah.
Dedicated for this activity. That's what I'm trying to not get into, what we call it, seppage versus wastewater.
But that will be pumped out on a regular basis, and.
That land spread as needed, right?
Okay.
So, yeah, M P C A has a limit of fifty thousand gallons a year before you need to get an M P C A permit. We'll be. Not even close to that, still.
The only wastewater is going in this separate tank and not in two years, so.
Nope, we have a separate septic tank for the house. This was an old existing tank, and it's pretty much just, it was a tank that works, so it holds, it holds. And now, you know, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have a drain field, so we just pump that out, put that in a compost spot.
You have your own logging equipment, use bathrooms, brother?
Yeah.
And set there if you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm uh. Two of my neighbors, three of my neighbors are, are family, so they have lots of, lots of land and lots of, lots of equipment, but I have my own. Yeah.
The uh, custom exempt license, what does that allow you to do?
A custom exempt would be, just if you're familiar with Bluff Country Meats and Eitsen.
No.
I'll have the same license they have.
Well, you have an inspector on site then, when you, you won't?
No, not for custom exempt, because I'll be a, a custom exempt. You go uh, either E two, which is equal to U S D A, or U S D A for an inspector to be there all the time, so. So I can't retail out of state or retail that product there. Custom exempt states there has to be an owner. I'm doing it for somebody else, so there's an owner on the product. So if I have a animal that's, you know, I put up, offered for sale, and each of you took a quarter, and your name's on that quarter, then I process it however you want it, and it goes to you.
So when you get the retail exempt license, will that allow you to sell?
Yeah, if I do the retail in the fall, which is what I'm hoping to do, then I will have to get them killed at a inspected facility. Stint and Meats in Houston, and we've already, actually, they're doing a couple for me already, but then, once they're staffed, U S D A inspected, then I could bring them to my facility and further for retail. Complicated, believe me, unbelievable.
Can you, out of curiosity, uh, today, you, you raise the cattle. Can you kill it, butcher it, process it, eat it yourself, without any sale to anyone, without any permits, anything, or do you still eat something?
My own?
If we're gonna eat our own meat.
Yep. Yep, that's allowable. I mean, the M D A law states, uh, if it's consumed by your family, so. Well, brand family or uh, non-paying guests. So.
So when you start selling it to each of us by a quarter, that's when.
You would buy it live, yep, and then you own it, yep.
U S D A come in and inspect you?
No, not us, no.
But you would go to retail, would you then be inspected?
Retail, not only for the slaughter, for the kill. So whoever kills it, then it would be under U S D A inspection at Stintons or Dover Meats where the U S D A slaughtered. The retail exemption allows me to bring it back after it's U S D A inspected, killed.
You have like a state inspector then that comes around and expects your place once a year?
A property four times a year. Yep, our facility.
So is your, is your plan to mainly do, uh, like you said, cows that you raise, or are you that get people that are raising cows, bring them to you, for you to do the processing for them?
I'm doing this to enhance my animals, so I mean, my animals is priority. I'm not. And I mean no disrespect, I'm getting older. I know some of you are probably older than me.
You're fifteen, one.
This is kind of what I wanna eat the, for, you know, if you wanna say a partial retirement, and I mean, it makes the farm work if you can generate more dollars off the same animals. So it's, you know, trying to keep everything closer. I mean, I know there's always emergency stuff, and I've done some of those already, and. We got started in twenty twenty with the pandemic, when they were burying pigs in the, you know, in the landfills, so we were doing pigs for people up in the cities, you know, just. Helping them or whatever, it was just nuts, but there is a, just an unbelievable demand. Yeah, Levi Mull, he's the M D A supervisor, he says they placed twenty-two new facilities since twenty twenty.
So are you gonna do deer?
I'm sorry?
Deer, you're gonna do deer?
Deer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do uh, two hundred, up to two hundred deer without any additional licensing. If you wanna do two hu, over two hundred and do the donation program, you need to get a license to the D N R, but that's not. But. But, yep.
Any other animals outside of deer, pigs?
Uh, do some uh, goats and sheep.
Chickens?
Yeah, chickens is, I hate.
Still fire district. They're not fun to butcher.
Always, and I only, what was interesting about this whole thing is I have equipment to do chickens, and we've done our own chickens. And we've had people overcome to do their chickens on my farm, and they said, actually, that's not allowed. You can only do your chickens that are yours on your property. And uh, so it's kind of amazing what all the rules define that they have, so, but with the custom exempt, anybody now can come to my place and do them, so. And we're actually gonna, hoping to have a rental trailer that will rent out for people to do chick, chickens. They'll have all the equipment in it.
So you're gonna compost anything that is not usable?
Yep, the bones, hides, uh, feet, you know, those are the biggest things, so, I mean, of course, this. Internal awful, all the stomachs and all that disintegrates pretty fast, you know, and I have cattle, so I just mix it with my cattle. And uh, wait a year, and every year, start a new pile, and then that gets spread out in the field in the fall. True regenerative farming.
So you're gonna be pretty much onsite, you won't be going offsite to butcher, you'll be moving right on your place.
People can bring animals, yeah, I'm not going overall or anything like that. People can bring me animals, say an injured animal that they. euthanize themselves and bled out, and then they bring them to my place, but I'm not going out to do anything offsite.
Any further questions?
I'd just say on the actual, like, business sense of it, outside any zoning, et cetera, uh, I think it's awesome, you think about, um. There's really four big people that do everything, right, in the country, and kind of screws people over at the end of the day sometimes, right? So they get more and more people that are into this type of thing and doing this for your family or your.
Yeah.
It's fantastic.
Well, it's, yeah. And what's frustrating about it is actually I've been asked to go to Albert Lee to do a breakdown class for a food co-op, a little co-op over there, just to show them how to butcher the pig. You know, and that's was kind of my goal, I don't, we need more of these. The trouble is, you better be ready for a battle. You know, and I, I do commend Martin for really helping me out, putting this together, and, you know, well, this, this is certainly doable under all the rules that are already there. We're really not asking for anything special. And, no, it's because there are many, many people who like to do it, but. Or, I'm not saying Houston County, but other places, wells, types of things that just, it's really too sad, it's sad, because. But I actually asked them, they've never had a food, what do you wanna call it, food sickness related to home or farm slaughter yet, anything reported in the state ever, they don't have any record of it. So all their usual problems are, are uh, you know, from the big manufactured stuff, so it's actually way safer.
So. What did you, uh, Spring Grove Township? No comments?
Any comments at all?
No.
This is pretty much my buddy, he, he takes down, he raises it, but if he hasn't slaughtered for us, that's all I get all my, so I appreciate it.
Well, he's got a little logo, he can meet your meat.
But some people didn't like. I show videos, they get newborn pigs and they're uh. Kind of a heritage, so they have to reborn with stripes, and I'll show videos on you.
Well, there are no further questions, uh, I think we're kind of got the thing figured out. Appreciate that, and if you can, you can just sit there if you want, whatever you wanna do, uh, we'd probably go to findings and stuff here and there.
Number one. Planning commission shall not recommend a conditional use permit unless they find the following. One, that the proposed use can be used for the Houston County land, staff and office, primary goal. Agricultural practices, processing and retail sales of agricultural products are within the scope of the goal. All those that agree with the findings on the.
Alright.
Are you on page three?
Yes, yes.
Looking for the word finding, oh, there I see it.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Staff analysis, that the applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to change the use of an accessory structure to a farm outlet. Proposed change to direct sales initiated the need for a conditional use.
All those that agree with staff analysis on number two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality in the county. Staff analysis, the applicant states they will have no additional seppage with the proposed activity. The solid and liquid, liquid waste residual are not seppaged and will be composted and land spread according to the M P C A. Best management practices for beneficial use of industrial byproducts. Residual material that is not land spread will be managed by a smaller transporting it to go across.
All those that agree with the findings on, on number three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of runoff. Staff analysis, this is an existing building, the infirmable surface area will not change. The processed wash water will not be managed as surface water.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number four, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number five, that soil conditions are to accommodate proposed use. Staff analysis, the best management practices for land spreading industrial byproducts address soil suitability based on the U S D A soil classification system. To ensure nutrients are utilized and ground card, ground contours are amenable to, to preventing runoff.
All those that agree with the analysis on number five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed, and that standards have been met. Staff analysis, by virtue of food-grade facilities, the potential pollution hazards are minimized, including routine inspections for the respective products. Additionally, the liquid and solid waste are addressed through proper storage, land spreading, and disposal in the lacrosse town.
All those that agree with the analysis on number six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seven, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, the existing farm has all utilities and existing road access. Should any new utility need arise, the cost will be a responsibility of the landowner. The conditional use permitting is for a change to retail sales as the facility has already been operated.
All those that agree with the staff analysis on number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space. Staff analysis, the traffic for this activity will be minimal, and there is adequate parking, there is enough space for unanticipated demand. The applicant owns adequate contiguous acres for off-street parking and loading.
All those that agree with the analysis on number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Staff analysis, traffic associated with this proposal can be readily managed.
All those that agree with the analysis of number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes of the permitted. Staff analysis, while, while it will include direct to commercial sales, this farm is set back off the road and not directly visible to neighbors. The farm outlet itself will have no nuisance fa, nuisance factors, and its view shed is blocked by other structures.
Can say. Any opposed?
Eleven, that the establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development, improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, much of the surrounding acreage is cropland, and an additional component of this farm will not impede future surrounding development.
All those that agree with the analysis on number eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been or will, will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors. Fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations, so that none of these will constitute nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Staff analysis, this proposal will not have any outdoor activities, and it will not produce offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, or vibrations, and there will be no lighted signs.
All those that agree with the analysis of number twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curious? I'll make a motion to skip number thirteen, it's not applicable.
Number four.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's good, then.
Alright, number fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses are not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Staff analysis, the agricultural community is evolving, and many smaller producers are beginning to provide a unique direct sales service to increase their availability. This practice ultimately does not change the commercial agriculture that already exists at this neighboring sites.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, number fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Staff analysis, the applicant is required to follow all county, state, federal guidelines for the operation of their business, which should result in protecting for, for the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare.
All those that agree with the staff analysis of number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Are we the? Condition, right?
Do we need to accept the?
Yes, you should.
Make a, I'll make a motion to accept it.
You made a motion, the second of the motion?
I'll second that thing.
All those in favor of accepting the findings, uh, fact as read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
First condition, the permit shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Second condition, the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules, and ordinances. Number three, the following general provisions shall be followed when land applying byproducts. A byproduct must be immediately incorporated on locations prone to flooding. Application of byproducts shall not be applied upon water or any other liquids. Application of byproducts shall not be applied to areas that remain fallow for an entire cropping year. Liquid byproducts shall be injected or incorporated within forty-eight hours for soils with a surface horizon permeability of less than point two inches per hour. Byproducts shall not be applied from public road or across public road rightaways. The application area shall be delineated, fencing and natural barriers can be used as a reference. Byproducts shall be uniformly distributed over the application area. Byproduct runoff shall not occur. And no product or byproduct shall be observed six hours a, after application.
I have a question about that first one. What does that mean? Byproduct must be immediately incorporated on locations prone to flooding? Immediately after it's produced, or?
Okay. I think, okay, by. Let's see, it's, I'm taking, taking it out of the.
Right, right.
Um, the.
Means it can't stay on the surface here with the work.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right. Right, well, if there's a problem, get it, get it applied, right?
Now, just a question, do you have to, um, keep a log of all the places you put this on, like a commercial applicator or something to do, or not? To a certain extent, yes.
Yeah, I'd be, if it's surface, we're not, we don't have any, we're up on the top of the hill, so we don't have any flooding possibilities, but most of it'll be surface spread and then incorporated.
That's sort of what it's asking.
I'm sorry.
That's what that's asking.
The, I'm actually asking if you have to keep a.
You have to keep a log of where you're putting. Have to keep a log of where you're putting stuff.
Oh, not because I'm not under M P C A unless the county.
Well, that's, that's where the the delineated fencing, that that's what that's about. There's, there's some guidance that will go along with that, so. I know I need to be speaking about her. But, yes.
It wouldn't be too difficult, you know, just to mark the field you put it in.
And that's, that's what that usually is in here, the number.
Yeah, M P C A.
Seven, one now, yeah.
Think they said ten tons. Under ten tons of of solids.
That's.
Dry matter solid waste.
That, that's for a permit.
Yep.
That that doesn't mean there still aren't conditions even with without.
Okay. Everybody kind of agree with these conditions or anybody have other thoughts on it or anything?
The last one, no bonding of byproducts shall be in the kids' hours after application. Where you put it out in the field and it's standing out there and you can see it or what does that explain that one to?
I, I think, I think there is, say you put it into a heavy soil. And part of it went partway down into a low area. And it didn't immediately move migrate into the soil, and so. If it sat there for getting close to six hours, you need to get out there and work it again to make sure you got it. I think that's the.
Probably pretty doable.
I see a lot of them where they. Five hours later, you can still see the water in there.
Yeah.
And branch. But I'm just curious, so I'll think how to explain.
Well, if we all agree on the conditions and the findings, is there somebody that would like to make a motion? Who sent this to them?
And second.
Motion's been made and seconded and let's do a roll call.
Rick Myrie?
Yes.
Cindy Wright?
Yes.
Jane Bellmeyer?
Yes.
And him?
Yes.
Jim Weiser?
Yes.
Very happy?
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Oh, you won.
You got it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Somebody motion to. Sorry, I want to approve the minutes ago.
I'll second. Thank you, invited a voice vote on that, all all in favor of approving last meeting, that's what the last year. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to those?
I'm staying. I wasn't here.
Sounds good. I think that's good. Any other discussion on, I think this is done, is what your discussion on anything else? Kind of curious, all the. Comprehensive land use planning situations going were, what's happening?
We're getting to the end of the chapters and we should have a draft. Probably about early. And then that'll be presented to the public for public.
And that'll be like hearings, meetings, there'll be two, there'll be a couple opportunities, yeah. I think that's pretty important to actually have people get a chance to come and speak. Absolutely, I'm sure there's some lessons to be taught to them.
Yes, I think we should have the planning commission come and the board of justice.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
They'll be involved. Yeah.
So when an hearing's done, we'd like to see them there. Kind of part of the job, I would see, I mean, we make a lot of the rulings, so. I think that we should be involved.
Absolutely, I mean, the basis for what you're doing comes from. What's in the. The document, so absolutely.
I'm curious, city on that document, is there any sections on development? Like specifically?
Yes, I mean, like economic development or?
Or like part of it.
Housing development?
Housing development. But actual density of development.
There's discussions of certain topics and development is sort of always there. The environment, development, there's sort of like about four items that are just always. Given on every consideration, and so development is. Virtually everywhere, but there are some discussions of development. In terms of. How it relates to self. You know, except thinking in rural location should we have combined set? That's a discussions on that, there's development discussion on parks. Where would you go in the future on that? There's just a little bit of discussion on like energy efficient housing. You know, and should you you want to promote that magnetic grid, there's a discussion on new roads. There's some discussion, a little bit of thing Brian Bobodinsky brought up was. Uh, bike trails being added on to possible highways. Um, so there's, it's kind of everywhere.
And I'm sure that one house per one dwelling per quarter quarter is going to come up, and I think. That's where that development comes into. There, there are some places that make sense to put more houses in one place instead of scattering them all over.
That's gonna be an interesting one.
That's, I think, was on a lot of people's minds.
It's, it's definitely, I mean, what, what? The, the survey results, I won't say they're fifty fifty, but they were pretty close. In terms of, you know, should we change it, should we leave it alone? I mean, it was, it was a lot closer than. I'm thinking it was like. One was forty four and one was fifty six. I mean, it was, it was, it was pretty tight.
I think the way to approach it is they have just certain, certain exceptional places that were to to change it. Mostly keep the quarter quarter thing.
The, the interesting one. That probably one of the bigger ones that sort of comes up along these lines is the heritage. Multi generation, you know, can the generation stay together, yeah. You absolutely don't. You're more than welcome, but you don't have. But, yeah.
Thanks again.
The. One of the, the ideas is. You know, keeping a generate, an extra gen, two generations or maybe even more, being able to decide. You know, close to where they work. You know, and you do have that with interim use permit a little bit. But not quite to the same scale. But then the counter of that is. Is as if it, if they sell out, then so then all of a sudden you end up with this extra house. You know, and.
A lot of that they worried about the divorce is. As you, you get a young woman that comes out and works in the farm and. She doesn't get along, you know, with the rest of the family. Then she usually gets a house. That's, you know.
Poor guy.
Well, that's true, I think this is going to be influenced a lot by. The location, you know, the. The around La Crescent is much more residential.
Right.
Versus, you know, by Houston or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's going to be hard to deal with, I mean, there, there needs to be some recognition. That it's more prominent here than there.
Could you explain? I asked you about this once before. Where if you're within two miles of like a city, you can put a house anywhere? What?
I, I, I've seen that in other plans.
Oh, you haven't seen that in our plan yet, go ahead.
La Crescent might even have that in a plan. Um, I've seen it written in other, other, other cities' plans, that's I've seen.
I know a guy that bought land now. Within two miles of Houston, he expects to put a house in.
He probably does.
That's not really allowed at this point.
No, it's not.
Well, is he, is it one per quarter quarter?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, his, doesn't he have an open corner?
No.
Then, then it's different.
But, I mean, even still, yeah.
But see, with the new laws that saying that you can put a house in within two miles of a city. You know.
Well, okay, think about this too, that, so you've got the two miles, then you still have to change the ordinance. To reflect that, and you have to rewrite everything to match up.
Yeah, that's right.
That's, that might be.
That's gonna be the hard part.
Because that, that, you have to fire on it, go the other way.
Some cities like, you know, Spring Grove, there's a lot of total land right around the city. You would want to have that all sacrifices because someone would put a development for you to.
Yeah.
I'm thinking more of these places that you can't really farm, you know, that are, they're having a valley or something, it's got a two acre field and it must be far. Something like that makes sense.
Well, okay, look at, look at what's happening with La Crescent with the most recent sub development that's starting right now where. That was a pretty nice chunk, but I mean, the developer isn't gonna wanna. Put down a pile of money, put in curb and gutter and put in all the stuff the city's gonna want. Unless it's a nice piece, nice piece of land to begin with. You know, and so when they're gonna put in forty houses or whatever their number could be.
See that.
They're gonna max it out.
That happened in Houston. You know, Hoskins and Boone bought that land right next to Houston. Then they didn't have the money to develop it. So a big developer bought that out. And you see, and you don't control none of it either.
Well, I think another issue is too is gonna be how this is implemented.
Yes.
Um, you know, all of a sudden, somebody's got a, you know. Pot of gold, they can, you know. You know.
You need resources to protect the resources.
Yeah, you know, you have, they have to have a, a implementation. Plan.
And, and it does, and that's what we, we're actually working on right now at chapter four, it does have saying. These are the people that are responsible for various categories.
Okay.
And, and that's actually. In my mind, that was the best part of the documents.
There's another thing is we don't want guys buying up eight acres of works land and then putting three dollars. The township to.
Yeah, see, that's basically. You go to Money Creek Township. And. If you go west of Money Creek. None of them roads get fixed.
Yeah.
Because everybody that lives at Money Creek doesn't use. And it's, it's just hell, you know.
It's also kind of like this.
That's true.
It won't be too long before we be looking at it developing out, you know, fine.
That would be one of them, yes.
And, and they're gonna do developments. We gotta make developments big enough so you can get a fire truck in.
Absolutely.
And, you know, this is something I don't think anybody's addressed. But I was over and across working for the hospital. And we had to drive up to places where you couldn't turn around a big truck. And that is a safety issue with fire trucks. And if you can't get a fire truck in, how can you save a house?
Well, we're seeing.
Through that, on the top of the hill.
Of course.
Crescent had a problem with that.
And they're, they're still kind of small.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Good, yeah. We see that every day, how on earth do these houses? They have lots of awful driveways. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the ability to access.
And you must have a different grade that you allow in present than twelve percent or something like that. Seems like. Someone's pretty steep too.
Well, that one, the one, the one, the development, they don't like to get you down by these. You can tell he's gonna slide into the road. Because that road is way too steep. You know, that's something we're gonna have to address. Down the road because he can come down that hill. And he's gonna slide right out on the highway.
You know, there. What's interesting about a lot of these, I, I see this once a week. Somebody will want to put a driveway and they'll find a spot, how far up it isn't too bad. But it's fourteen, sixteen percent to get up there. And then all of a sudden, it's like, are they gonna make this big, long, sweeping driveway that's gonna go around, back up? And that's the end of the lot. You know, and so, yeah.
We got that one on our.
Yeah.
Well, I think you gotta do that when they're applying for the permit. We have to build the house, that's, that's why I really think you should go out. With at least one township officer. Just, we used to do that in our township. And that really saved a lot of.
Yes, it did.
A lot of headaches.
We used to.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that, absolutely.
Yeah.
Is that where you got your townships input and then you can bring that to us?
Because the township you do buys it. Like. You know, it's going across the road to get it in, they usually, at least our township always did.
And every township's a little different, some.
Yeah.
Some don't.
Yeah.
Some favor the caller, you be.
I can remember, we did one on Gunsmith Road up there, New Katan. And the guy, uh, this is when, um. Who was the one armed guy that used to work here? Rick Frank, Rick Frank. Went. And he fell down where the house was supposed to be. He actually fell, he was so pissed off, he couldn't even talk to him. And the guy had built a second house on township right away.
Oh, gosh.
And he didn't wanna, he just, he just told us, you know what, just find me and let's get on with it. You know. Rick Frank did not. You know.
There's a house between La Crescent and Boca. Part of each one is in a different township.
Oh, we got them in New Katan too.
Yeah, this front door is in one in the impact.
Yeah, we got them in New Katan too. There'll be your taxes.
Marty, can you clarify, you mentioned that there's discussion? When we were talking a few minutes ago about that, discussion on this, discussion on that, what is that leading to? Is that leading to recommendations?
Right, I mean, the internal discussion, basically what, what we're doing is. Couple of commissioners are Dewey and Eric are on the. Creating the group, and then it's the zoning people, E D A, the economic development people, Allison, Brian, county engineer. Um, and then T K D A, the consultant.
Okay.
Who's preparing the report, and basically they, they put together a. They. They give an outline. We, you know, go through the outline, they add more text, put it together, then we look at it again. So that's when I'm talking about discussion, that, that's where. But the other side of that is, is that T K D A absolutely looked at the comments. That have come and come from. The. Comments on the plan for the voting for the question and stuff like that, so they certainly factored that in so far.
Okay.
And. You know, there'll be more.
So concerns addressed.
And this is for the rewriting of the.
The complex one.
Yeah, complex one.
Another one that, that's still sitting out there is car geology. That, 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 you know, there's some people that have expressed that just about that.
You know, and when I was up at that meeting up at Hillmore County. The car systems didn't bother them a bit. They, they allow. Four thousand head. It doesn't matter what the soil or the cars, anything.
Do you remember the battles that they had in Fallon?
Yep, yep.
Well, or the that and the Fallon, uh, sewage treatment plant.
Yep.
And the cars on that, University of Minnesota, the knockdown regal fights on that. I don't, I, I'm thinking like they don't want to jump into it.
Oh, they don't. They just want to okay it.
The one, the one thing, there are people that probably didn't know the survey was, you know, online or. Available on paper, there are a lot of comments that didn't get.
Right, yep, I think that's.
The agreement is that we don't want to have the end of this thing is that. Little group of you guys.
Right.
You know, that, that's the last thing that we want to have.
If anybody wants something. Then we, we definitely try to. Make it accessible as possible.
But, but, I mean, it's just impossible to know all this stuff when you just, when your day to day stuff, what's going on? So I think.
Oh, absolutely.
At, at some point here, it's gotta really be emphasized that this is time for the public to come on and.
Right.
Yeah, pretty close to that.
We're, we're, we're within, the notifications probably within two, I better say three, four weeks.
Sounds good.
Probably be two of them for sure.
Yes, that'd be two. Yeah, you know what I mean, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, I mean. If it ends up being a couple hours and it ends up being four hours, that's fine too, you know, and so, or if we continue, it doesn't have to be. That it's all just, you know, cut and dry procedural we did, but no, the purpose of this is to get, get the opinions. Get them, get them in there.
What kind of start time are you thinking for a meeting like that?
What do you suggest?
You gotta be a little careful because I used to Malcolm and he used to always irritate when. Have a meeting at five o'clock if you're.
Okay, that's good to know.
You know, so you, you gotta have it, I mean, most people like to have it at six, but you gotta kind of allow people that are actually touring. So they, they can come.
Because it's land, it's, they're the people, right?
Well, we had to hear a couple weeks ago, we started that at seven.
I think that's pretty fair.
That'd be about right. Just hope it don't go four hours.
Well, yeah. It might be four or five hours.
Uh, we haven't worked out the.
It might be good to have that company do.
I was just gonna say, I think. More to come on that, I, that I can tell you, but I, I'm halfway thinking that. E K D A, the consultant, sure, will have kind of a. Not a presentation, it's not a sales pitch, but it's kind of like, they'll kind of have a procedure on different parts of it, so. We'll see how that can be played as that.
Would they, will they facilitate?
That's the term. They, they will be here.
Well, could people see what's they're proposing before the meeting?
And there'll be, you know.
They should put that in the paper.
There'll be.
You know, what the ideas.
And that's what we're talking about. You know, where we go on that type of stuff, so it's coming up real quick.
In the paper and online.
And the presentations and where it will be available.
We're on the website too, the website.
And Facebook and all that things. Would help you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was. But where that's getting a little interesting is, they did come in and say, the economy by the turn up. And maybe they're, they're slowing down, I, I go, I just said, realize. Your initial permit stood for one year, you could get a one-year extension. So, you know, at the end of two years, as much as people are watching, somebody's gonna be saying. That's it, you didn't do it. So.
What's that?
On the root helping, uh, helping repair shop. You know, at the end of the day, with, with. Parts of that, it's two years maximum, if they don't, if they don't move on.
What are they gonna do with the old jail?
That I have no clue and I'm not dealing with hell.
I don't blame you there. What's that? I feel like there was plans on that when I was mayor of California. That was like seven, eight years ago, man. Like four different options. I never got to stay there, so I don't care.
We're doing a space utilization, but. That jail will probably be end up, if anything, be used for storage for historic. Or be torn, whatever, we like to give it to historical.
That would be a good idea to tell you the truth.
Well, then they, they, they come here and they want storage, we got, we need storage, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, let's write a grant, let's fix it up a little bit, and you guys can use it for storage, you pay the heat bills and whatever.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not going to go for putting a lot of money in something like that, it, it needs handicap.
Always the structure.
Rough, well, it's getting falling down.
They make it use it as bed and breakfast. And I stayed in one of, uh, Preston.
The old jail?
Yeah.
Stayed in that one?
Yeah, I stayed in it.
They can have a theme like a haunted jail.
Yeah.
Did you ever read the book, the L R Stories?
No, I didn't.
There's a book that goes along with that.
Really?
Neil, I'll remember that.
Yeah, I'll check.
Neil used to be the sheriff of Hillmore County.
Yep.
And then he got a job with like that. Anyway, he, uh, he wrote a book on jailhouse stories.
Really?
Yeah.
I've got, uh, letters that people wrote to each other, they're riding your own trains. Like nineteen ten, nineteen twelve. Where the trains coming down, uh, that hill going into Plainsboro.
Eisenor's.
Eisenor's, oh, oh, when the, when the train went off. That the everyone didn't want to say anything because so-and-so forgot to fix the track.
I think at this point, they probably. Some move. Thank you. All in favor?